Tonight's Monroe City Council meeting, this is the regular business meeting for Tuesday, August 13, 2024. The time right now is 7:00 PM. I'm going to ask that our Clerk Wykoff please call the council, please call the role.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members present and establishing a quorum are council members Fulcher, Hanford, Walker, and Scarborough.
Thank you. And we heard at an earlier meeting that council members Kenny and Fisher would not be here this, I'm sorry, council members Beaumont and Fisher would not be here this evening. And also, I heard from council member Gamble that he would not be here for medical reasons. Unless there's objection, we will consider their absences as excused. Seeing no objection, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that would be the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask that council member Scarborough, please lead us in the pledge. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comments. I'm sorry, before I move forward, we did make a change to the agenda this evening. I will go ahead and note for the record that the amendments to the agenda are, one, to remove the public hearing from the agenda, which will be presented at a future meeting. Two, we would like to add an announcement and presentation section just after the public comments and present the branding item there under announcements and presentations, which is currently listed under unfinished business. And then, three, we will be holding an executive session, which we will, which we will convene just after the branding item. So if there aren't any objections, we'll consider those amendments as such, as approved. All right. Lastly, council members, the piece of paper that you have before you is the agenda for this evening, as I have just stated that it is now amended. Any, any questions on that? All right, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That item is announcements and presentations. This is city, I'm sorry, public comments. Thank you. I missed two, two marks on my sheet of paper. I said I needed coffee earlier. I think that maybe decaf would have been a better choice. All right, so we're going to move to public comments, so that I don't have to read the script. If you're interested in speaking this evening, please raise your hand. All right, seeing nobody, I will forego this speech for now. We're going to go ahead and move into announcements and presentations now skipping the public hearing. And this is city branding project finalized brand architecture with Administrator Knight. Initially?
Yes, initially it is. So the issue in front of council, the issue in front of council this evening, we'll just come forward, we'll have you sit right here, actually. You're welcome. All right, so I'll, I'll do an introduction, and then I'll let you do the presentation. Is that, okay, perfect. We didn't collaborate beforehand. So the issue in front of council this evening is to review the final draft of the brand visuals, so that's the logo and the architecture, and to provide direction to mayor and staff to bring back the logo and architecture for adoption following completion of the brand guidelines. So we had brought the brand and logo forward at the city council's March 26 meeting and prevented, and presented revisions based upon council input at that time. Council members shared feedback on the six options that were presented, ultimately choosing variation 4B, that was the blue color with the serif lettering as the council's final choice. The final draft, brand visuals and brand architecture, will be presented this evening by members of our J-Ray team. And the next steps then, I'm sure they're going to cover this as well, but just to give council a little bit of a preview, will be developing the brand guidelines, outlining the brand launch plan, providing some training and community outreach, and then a final council presentation. So again, the request for you this evening is to review the final draft of the brand visuals, that's the logo and the architecture, and then provide direction to mayor and staff. So with that, I'll turn it over to our team at J-Ray. I got you.
Hi, thank you for having us this evening. I'm Jen Willie. I'm a senior advisor with J-Ray.
And I'm Julia White. I am an art director with J-Ray.
All right, next slide. So today's goals, as Deborah shared, we're here to present the proposed brand concept and the brand architecture. And our hope is to leave tonight with your approval so that we can move forward with next steps and complete the brand and develop concept or develop assets and conduct training so that employees can start using the brand. Next slide. And so just a recap of how we arrived here throughout the process, we've met with, asked for feedback, and listened to various members of your community through surveys, through interviews, phone calls. And we also compared your current brand with six other cities in the surrounding area so that we can see what, what is unique to Monroe and how we would like you, how we could help you stand out compared to these other cities. And then we've also met with brand ambassadors and of course, staff members and city council. Next slide. Throughout the process, we've also kept your vision statement as kind of a guiding light. So Imagine Monroe has been close to the work that we've done, keeping, keeping this as kind of the forefront. And it's helped drive us to what's on the next slide. Last year, these, the three Ps, our brand foundation, was confirmed and approved by city council. And so that included your personality, your position, and promise. And the goal was to help these align with your vision statement, which we are proud and happy to see that that's been accepted. All right, and I'll hand it over to Julia.
Thank you, Jen. So this slide here, you can see a previous concept that we presented previously, and we have since done a couple of more evolutions to it based on council's feedback. So if you'll recall, the brand team unanimously voted to move forward with this logo or an iteration of this logo. And what was really strong about this concept is that there's a lot of different layers of symbolism happening in this concept. You can see a bird that could be seen as a swift, an eagle, any other kind of local bird species. It could also be taken less literally and be seen to represent optimism and forward motion and future thinking. The shape of the wings feels similar to racing flags. We've got mountains representing the cascades, negative space that feels like it denotes mountain streams. And then overall, the shape gives the shape of a capital M. So it felt really strong because different people really saw different things, and different layers of meaning resonated with different people in this concept. There were some questions about whether we could bring this brand a little bit more in line with the welcome signage that had, that is, that is new and had been recently done. So that that signage could be seen as being under the umbrella of the Monroe brand a little bit more. So if you go to the next slide, this is our recommendation for the final logo. So we've moved from the gradient green to a gradient blue. And the typography is now more in line with the typography on those welcome signs. So we have an all caps Monroe, and we've gone with a slab serif font style, and that feels a lot more in line with those signs. So overall, the logo still maintains what it had before, which is this clean, minimalist, and very balanced look. Next slide. So this logo has been further developed into a series of sub-brands that we will walk through now. And so this is going to be a great way to differentiate messaging for different audiences while maintaining that cohesive brand. So for the city government, the city of Monroe, Washington, you might expect to see this on the city's official website in the future, maybe on building signage, letterheads, certainly any other materials that are officially coming from the city. Next slide. We also have a tourism leg to the brand. So the name that we've landed on for this is Explore Monroe. And this one takes on this circular badge layout, which feels very exploratory and connotes this sense of adventure and discovery, which is just a very strong indication of tourism. So you might see this on any collateral that's speaking to a visitor or to potential visitors. So our use case example here, it could be on merch, such as a water bottle. Next slide. And then when speaking to potential future businesses, developers, or any other kind of investor, make it Monroe has that strong call to action that's built right into the logo there. So for example, you might see this on the cover of a brochure that's targeting business owners, that outlines business incentives, and et cetera. Next slide. So two main audiences remain that have not yet been spoken to. So that would be residents and small businesses. And as we were developing the sub-brands for these audiences, there were just a multitude of different words and phrases that were resonating with different individuals. So we ultimately decided to go back to the Imagine Monroe statement and pull out a series of words that would speak to the experience of living and working in Monroe, and really just what makes Monroe unique. We believe that for a place brand to be truly successful, you need this buy-in from the community. And so the hope with this community series of badges is that the community will feel that their lives and experiences are reflected in this series of badges, and they will embrace them and be proud to use them and really be ambassadors of Monroe. So the idea is that these would be available for people to do what they want with. The design of this series of badges also pulls in a full color spectrum, in addition to the green gradient that you'll recognize from the previous concept that we showed before. It's been evolved to blue. Another previous concept also had a rainbow spectrum of colors. And so that was a really popular concept as well. And so this is a really great way of bringing that back into the brand and really establishing that cohesive color palette that still feels very bright, very lively, and very, very flexible. So picture these being used out in the community. If you go to the next slide, we've got a handful of use case examples for these. So for example, a series of t-shirts, so people can really rep the different message that resonates with them. Local Monroe would work great as a window cling in the window of a small business, or I could picture it being on packaging, you know, stamped onto a coffee sleeve or something like that. Maybe you would see a gather Monroe mural that's being put up as a focal point in some community gathering space. So really just endless applications for this series. On the next slide, we've got one more use case. This would be a wonderful opportunity to create a series of light pole banners, for example, just to really beautify the area. And it would also just allow folks to see the assortment of messages and see them working all together and seeing what they say about what it's like to, to live and work in Monroe. These also open up a whole realm of possibilities for future campaigns. So, you know, for example, local election season, there could be a Monroe Votes version of this badge or something like that. So endless flexibility there, a great way to just get that different messages out there into the community, but it still feels like a cohesive part of this brand. So the place brand there at the top is that overarching brand, and that look and feel has been extended into all of these sub-brands for city government, tourism, economic development, and then the community series underneath Imagine Monroe, developed for residents and small businesses, but also is welcome to be used by all and for all audiences wherever that resonates. I'll pass it back to Jen to talk about next steps, and then we can backtrack and stay on this slide once she's done with that slide. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. So next steps, should we leave here tonight with the approval to move forward, we'll then develop your brand guidelines. This will also include us, or our next steps will also include us developing some brand assets that have yet to be determined. And then we'll also help produce the brand voice, which will really, where we'll really lean into your vision and those three Ps that we approved last year. We'll outline a brand launch plan for the brand leadership team, and we'll do some training. And then our hope is to present to you a final summary of the adopted brand and materials. And then we like to check in with our clients about six months after a branding exercise, just to make sure that, that it's meeting your needs and see if there are questions or ways in which we might be able to help you execute that further. And so, yeah, so I think that brings us to the end of our presentation. We can go ahead and back up to that brand architecture slide, and then I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you very much. So the, the motion that we're looking for this evening for your council's consideration is, and we've got an amended version of the motion, would be to, to move to approve the logo and brand architecture and to provide direction for, for us to move forward with developing the, what do you call it again?
Brand guidelines.
Thank you, the brand guidelines, new terms for me, to develop the brand guidelines to bring back forward to council for consideration for adoption. And so the brand guidelines are sort of the rules as to how these are used, and things like colors and, and fonts and things like that. So think about it as a small zoning code for, for logos. Okay.
Good analogy.
Good, okay, thanks. Former planner here. So I turned to council. If you'd like the motion, we can put that up, but we thought you might want to talk about this first. So council members, any questions, discussion, or thoughts on this, or do you want me to just have the motion put up? Go ahead, council members.
My main concern before was that it did not mesh with our signs, our brand new signs. And you guys have done a great job of bringing that in. And all sorts of great ideas. I can see how this would actually work, and I'm excited about seeing it in actual use. So if you have some wording available, yes.
So you still have the floor, because we're not going to go with that wording?
No, that's, that's not going to work.
If we could, because I'd like to reflect on a couple of things, we'll click on that screen.
I will bypass that. I'll just...
You still have the floor. So you can make the motion if you like. It's okay.
Well, I do need the wording, but I'm also, I would like to hear from the other three because, you know, it's not just me.
Oh, okay, that sounds good.
Way to go. Moving on to the other people.
Thanks. If we could go ahead and put the slide back up again, the thing that I wanted to point out, so that you understand a little bit where the words came from down on the bottom, that's the one thing that I wanted to point out, was we picked words that were from Imagine Monroe. And so I, just, just for your awareness, local is in there, lively, gather, made in, connect, friendly, natural, and belong. So that was just one of the things that I wanted to point out. We're very intentional to try to reflect Imagine Monroe in that series. And that's the only thing that I wanted to share. I think everything else you've heard from and is self-explanatory. We'll go ahead and turn to the council. Does anybody else have any questions or comments on this? Go ahead, council member Walker.
I just want to say thank you guys so much for the edits you made. It is beautiful. I'm really excited. I love the all-around, every slide that you brought up. I'm like, that makes sense. That is awesome. So.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you to staff as well for your patience with all of our requests.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we'll go ahead and put the motion for your consideration up. Council member Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I echo the comments. Fabulous job. The new blue just pops. I love it. So I'll go ahead and make the motion since the words are up. I move to approve the proposed logo and brand architecture and provide direction to develop brand guidelines to bring back to council for consideration.
I have a motion from council member Hanford, a second from council member Fulcher for the requested action as shown on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes four zero. Go ahead, council member Hanford.
Really quick, too, I just love the, if you could go back to the verbiage there. I love all the different, I love the way that, how we incorporate all the words from Imagine Monroe. So excellent, excellent work. Thank you. Go ahead, council member Walker.
On that last slide you guys had with next actions, what does the timeline look like on all that? I mean, from, from today to deployment of something like this, what are we looking at?
Yeah, so I know that we are planning to work with a consultant that the city is currently working with, and the plan is to have something to roll out by mid-September because there is a report that is, that that consultant is doing. So we're kind of working backwards from that timeline at this time. So the plan would be to have the brand guidelines and the launch plan available by mid-September, barring any, any holds in that process.
That is so cool. I was thinking six, 12 months.
So to J-Ray, I really appreciate all the work that you've done with us. I, we can go back to the architecture real quick. I, I told you out there that I really, really like the way the logo looks. I, we've already talked about it a lot, but I really love the colors that we've come up with. I like the way that the logo looks. I'm really excited about this, and I just thank you so much. Staff, thank you so much for facilitating this and giving guidance. And council, I thank you so much for challenging us to make some adjustments to this. I think we've got a better product than we started with a couple months ago, and I'm really excited to see this roll out. So thank you all very much. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That'll be, that'll be an executive session. So we are going to call for an executive session for potential litigation person to RCW 42.30.110 subsection 1, subsection little i. We will do this for an initial seven minutes beginning at 7:22 PM. We are now in, now in executive session.
The executive session has been extended two minutes.
Okay, we're back out of executive session, and we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda. That item would be the consent agenda. I turn to council. Council member Walker? You're reaching for the flag. I consider that good.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, you moved to...
I moved to motion to approve.
I moved to approve?
Moved to approve the consent agenda.
It's okay. In a second. All right, so I have a motion to approve the consent agenda from council member Walker, a second from council member Hanford. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes four zero. All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. This is item number 7.1, automated traffic safety cameras. And I understand that Liam McCorkle is online. All right, Mr. McCorkle, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. I apologize I am not able to be there in person tonight, but I'm happy to be here for our fourth discussion discussing automated traffic safety cameras. So just as a brief recap of the previous discussion at the July 29 regular business meeting, council requested to, for staff to bring back an ordinance, amending ordinance number 006 2012, allowing for the required advisory vote on any ordinance authorizing the use of automated, automatic ticketing cameras to be scheduled for either a general or special election. And additionally, there is also still an unanswered data question regarding historic violator data and breaking that down between resident versus non-resident. So starting with that, that later ladder item, I would like to thank Sherry Simonson, who dug through some historical records and was able to provide a very good sample size, which we are able to present with you today, and that is present in your council packets. So just to give some context for that data and how we were able to find it, during the city's previous speed camera program, printing errors that occurred right at the onset of the program in 2011 on the part of the camera vendor caused the, caused a large number of infractions captured between September and October 2011 to be dismissed. And at the time, that camera vendor generated a report of these dismissals that included zip code data of the violators. So staff went through, grabbed that data, and then sorted that, those zip codes into violators based on cities' associated zip codes. So you can see that table that we collected with a sample size of about 705 individuals. And you can see that for the city of Monroe, that equated to about 199 infractions, which was about 28% of the total infractions coming out of the city of Monroe. Just as a couple of clarifications and considerations with that data, that only came from school speed zone cameras, so Freylands and Frank Wagner elementaries. Additionally, it should be noted that although some of these zip codes are associated with certain municipalities, that doesn't necessarily mean that those individuals don't live very close to Monroe and aren't utilizing the Monroe School District as well, which is potentially part of the reason why you might see the city of Snohomish zip code, zip codes getting a large amount of infractions in that data. And then once again, this data does not necessarily reflect the results that would be generated today, and contemporary results are going to, of course, vary depending on camera location and contemporary circumstances. So with that, I will move into the other item for today, which is draft ordinance number 006 2024. So once again, as requested by council, draft ordinance number 006 2024, which is also attached in your agenda packets, would amend ordinance number 006 2012 by allowing the required advisory vote for any ordinance that authorizes the use of automatic ticketing cameras to be placed on the ballot during the next general or special election. That would also include primary elections as well. For even further clarifications, just to make this clear, adoption of ordinance number 006 2024 would retain the city council's future discretion to repeal ordinance number 006 2012 outright, and adoption of ordinance number 006 2024 does not necessitate that the city or city council must move forward in implementing an automatic traffic safety camera program. So with that, that will mostly conclude my fairly brief presentation today. There is the option for council to move to accept as first reading ordinance number 006 2024, which would amend ordinance number 006 2012, providing that the required advisory vote on any ordinance authorizing the use of automatic ticketing cameras may be scheduled for either a general or special election. But with that, I will conclude my brief presentation and hand it back to the mayor.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. McCorkle. I am looking to council. Is there a motion? Or go ahead, council member Walker?
Move to accept the first reading ordinance number 006 2024, amending ordinance number 006 2012, providing that the required advisory vote on any ordinance authorizing the use of automatic ticketing cameras may be scheduled for a general or special election, providing for severability and establishing effective date.
I have a motion from council member Walker, a second from council member Scarborough for the requested action shown on the screen under 7.1 unfinished business. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes four zero. All right, thank you very much. Council member Walker?
Keep it short. If possible, I would love to see if I could get any other council members that'd be willing to motion for a public hearing on the same meeting we had the second reading. Hopefully in September, I don't know if staff can make that happen or how long the announcement needs to go out in advance, but I think that'd be a cool opportunity to, to get comment from citizens if there was any before moving forward with the ordinance.
I'd support that. Okay, so council member Walker, are you making a motion?
Yes. So I would like to move that the mayor and the staff schedule a public hearing.
Would you like me to try to take a stab at what I think you...
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay, so if you agree with this, you can say so moved. Okay. I move to provide direction.
I move to provide direction.
Oh, you don't need to say it after.
All right, go ahead.
Unless you're going to do this.
Go ahead.
So I'm going to start over. Okay, I move, I move to provide direction to mayor and council. I'm sorry. See, that's why she's, okay. I move to provide direction to mayor and staff to schedule a public hearing for ordinance number 006 slash 2024 to occur with... to occur with the consideration of second reading sometime after September 1st, or after September 1st. Is that consistent with what you said?
I could never came up with that, but that's exactly.
She's typing, so and she corrected it. So it's, so moved.
Hanford, second.
All right. I have a motion from councilmember Walker, a second from councilmember Hanford for what is currently shown on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? Go ahead, councilmember.
We already have public comment. I don't understand why we need a public hearing, so I'm going to vote against that.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussion? Okay. And so as part of this, we would do a public notice is what I'm understanding. Okay. That's how we would do a public hearing. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough.
I request, Jake, what would you, what would we accomplish by having that that we didn't accomplish by having what we have?
I think the announcement of a public hearing on it would be helpful. Indicate to citizens that they would have an opportunity to come and weigh in on it before we made an ordinance about the issue. It's sort of in the direction of an advisory vote. Give us a better indication of how the community feels. No, we're, so I'm going to acknowledge flags. So he answered, and I probably shouldn't have allowed for that. But did you have, so he's answered the question. Do you have anything further since you have the floor?
Well, I'm wondering councilman Fulter's question or comment based that we have already had that?
Okay.
Do we have to have it? Do we need it again?
Okay. So it would not be something that would be required by law, but the council has the ability. And we've, I think we've done this one or two other times in my ten years of doing this. What's that?
Is it just good faith that we're doing it?
You have, the council has the ability to make a choice to hold a public hearing. That's, that's, that's within your purview is you can hold a public hearing, but one is not required for this kind of ordinance. So if the council wants to provide public notice that they can come and provide public comments, you have the ability to do that. So that's a choice that you have, but it's not legally required because unlike a zoning code change or something like that that would require a public hearing, this is a type that would not require it. Okay. Councilmember Hanford, you had your hand go up?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I agree, councilmember Fulter. We do have public comment every week. In my mind, I would love to, just the extra advertising that goes with a public hearing, I'd love to just hear, as we have had no one come to talk about the can. And this goes back to one of the things I talked about in the very beginning when this whole thing was brought up. Never once have had anyone come in years and said, we need traffic cameras, or we need red light cameras. They've talked about traffic issues and speeding, but they haven't talked about those specific things. And so if we get someone to come and share their opinions, great. I mean, I realize we have time every week and they're not here. So that's my thought. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker, your flag was up.
Said it perfectly. Councilmember, I appreciate it. Is there something particularly burdensome about the public hearing idea?
Councilmember Walker, we want to be careful about asking questions across the dais. That was one thing that, so.
Sorry.
Thank you. Any other flags at this time? Councilmember, go ahead. Councilmember Fulter?
Yeah, I, in my weekly talkings to people, I always tell them, hey, you've got three minutes of our time every single week. We'd love to hear from you. It's open all the time. There's discussion on unnamed social media about things. They know what's on our agenda. If they want to talk, awesome. Let's bring them in. I'm just not entrance, I'm not interested in making another Department of Redundancy department in our city.
Thank you. So there is a motion on the floor. Any or other discussion on the motion? Okay. Saying none, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion passes three, one with councilmember Fulter voting against. Councilmember Hanford, I saw your flag go up.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Liam for, oh, he's on here. Sorry.
He's still there. He's on video.
Yeah, I'm looking at your picture now. I was looking out here, waiting here on there. I want to thank you, Liam and Sherry for all the extra work and help looking into the data. I know that that was asked from other councilmembers that aren't here tonight, so I'm sure they'll appreciate that as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business item number 7.2, MFR Coaching and Consulting Change of Scope Request. And Rachel Adams. Good evening. Clap twice. Sorry. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Bringing back to you today, the change of scope for MFR consulting. We have looked into this item as staff and feel that we've added some of the detail that council had asked for previously and that is consistent with the contract. And with now, I would love to answer any questions that the councilmembers might have.
Thank you very much. Any questions or motion? Councilmember Fulter, go ahead.
Thanks, Rachel. Yeah, I feel like our questions were answered and that is simply what we were asking. So with that, I would like to move to approve the change of scope request from MFR Coaching and Consulting.
I have a motion from councilmember Fulter, a second from councilmember Hanford for the requested action shown on the screen under unfinished business item 7.2. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes four zero. All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is councilmember reports. Going to start off with councilmember Scarborough.
Well, once again, the night out function was a hit, resumed, it looked like it. And hats off to everybody and staff and police department that took their time to put it all together and the people that volunteered to do other things too. And thank you for your participation and your help.
Thank you. Councilmember Fulter?
I have two things. I hate to tell the Public Works Department again, but once again, people are breaking all our, you know, crosswalk signs at the Sam Street and Main Street connecting there. Also a question, when is Blueberry Park going to open? I've had inquiring minds are coming by my store saying, hey, when can we play there?
Farrell is available online.
Perfect.
Hello?
Go ahead, Mike.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Okay, yes. To answer your question, I was going to mention that in the department report a little later in that we expect or hope anticipate to actually open the park before the end of this month. So things are really wrapping up there. We had some, the, the rubberized port in place surfacing was being installed. So we're getting really close. So and when, when it is safe to open, we'll just go ahead and open it, but we also will be scheduling, of course, another ribbon cutting ceremony. So stay tuned.
All right. Thank you very much, Director Farrell.
Thanks.
That'll have to suffice the two-year-old who is anxious to be there. So I will let her know. And other than that, again, great job at National Night Out and that is all.
Thank you, councilmember Walker.
I'm sad to have missed National Night Out, but I'm sure that it was amazing. I just wanted to congratulate Public Works and Parks. There's so much, so many great things happening around Monroe with projects right now. The 179th sidewalk looks like it's complete and it looks great. Really excited that our students are going to be able to use that during the school year coming up. Park looks great. Seen a lot of positive feedback about it from the community online. And all the overlays seem to be going really well, fast and look great. So other than that, I've got nothing else to report.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Hanford?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the National Night Out was amazing as, as always. And it's good seeing a lot of you there. Just shout out to Mike and the Parks Department team. They are just keeping everything looking fantastic down there with all the different events, weekend after weekend, day after day. It's just amazing. So I really appreciate it, Mike. And yeah, and then as far as another note, I will be unavailable for the meeting on the Tuesday, the 27th.
Okay. 8:27. Got it.
8:27. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. I'm going to go ahead and turn it to department reports. Item 9.1, Human Services, June, July 2024 report. And I understand that this Harrigan's online. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. And thank you, council, for having me. Apologies, I can't be there in person. I'm battling a cold at the moment. But I wanted to present the Human Services, June, July 2024 report. Some of the highlights would be the Poverty 101 class registration information is still on there. There's still time to register if you're interested in going. Also, we have some final reports that we have done for the fiscal year of the AWC funding that we received. We have a report highlighting that from the peer sport outreach specialist and the case management specialist, as well as the one-year rental assistance update from the 1406 funding and the one-year mark for the mental health co-response program. So if anyone has any questions, let me know.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Oh, go ahead. Councilmember Hanford?
Well, just to thank you.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you. No worries. Okay, you got a, you got a chorus of thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda then is Parks Department Report with Director Farrell. Director Farrell?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Again, included in your packet is the department report for last month, July. It was a very busy month, lots of events, as we all know, because I saw a lot of you at the events. And last month was also Parks and Recreation Month, so we have a little blurb in there about all of the postings we made throughout the month about what we do. And we got a lot of views and likes and comments and so forth. So that was wonderful. And then last, I just want to point out, we have, towards the end of the report, a kudos, a citizen had reached, recently reached out praising Parks crew member Brian Olson for his hard work, his great attitude. And she just wanted to make sure that the city knew what an amazing employee we have. So anyways, we're really, we like the kudos. And so great job, Brian. And that concludes my report. I'll take any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Farrell? Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. Next item then is Economic Development, June, July, August 2024 report with Patrick DeHorti. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm mayor and council. I'm just getting my video started. Didn't want to be visible while I wasn't my turn. So good evening, everyone. Yeah, so in front of you in your packet is just a brief report for June, July, and the first part of August. As you know, our Economic Development Advisory Board is very active and they've had several meetings during that period that are summarized in the report. In addition, there are subcommittees. There are three subcommittees of EDA, the Downtown Subcommittee, the Industrial Subcommittee, and the North Kelsey Subcommittee. They all met from one to two times during that period. And some really key updates for this period have been a re-engagement with the Lowe's representatives regarding our city-owned North Kelsey properties. So that's actually active and going on. We started a new downtown merchants group meeting in June, which is now met June, July, August. Looking forward to a meeting in the first part of September again, excuse me. As you know, from my presentation last time, I've been working on the comprehensive plans economic development element. Have done the business newsletters, which I trust all of you are getting a copy of. And I do visit businesses throughout Monroe every week when I'm in office on Thursdays, sometimes other days. And just started up work on the Port of Seattle's Tourism Marketing Grant, the promotion, the campaign that comes out of that. So we just started working on that. So those are the highlights and be happy to take any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Thank you very much, Mr. DeHorti. I'm going to go ahead and move on to the next item then is Police Department Report, Chief Jolly.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. The council report is in your packet. I would like to point out a couple of highlights, if I may. Our community service officer, the picture of her with the deer, I want you to please take a good look at that. I'm going to keep it on file and try to pull it out every couple of years. So that's a good one. And also on page three, we have a new administrative assistant, Maria Kokoros. She began with us just recently and she has been an excellent addition. We're very appreciative to have her on staff. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Any questions? No zebras, chief?
No zebras.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda then is Mayor and Administrator Reports, and we're going to start with 10.1, City Administrator Report Extended Agenda, Administrator Knighton.
Thank you, Mayor. Looking on to the extended agenda for Tuesday, August 20th, we will have a Finance and Human Resources Committee meeting. The majority of that will be human resources. So we will have mid-year performance review update, IT updates, the Enterprise Resource Program update, and then an HR policy update, and then communications project update. So then, or then will be the primary staff member attending that finance committee meeting. For unfinished business, we will bring forward a 2025, 2026 revenue discussion. So this is the first opportunity for the Finance Committee to take a look at the revenue assumptions that we're going to be using to build the biennial budget. For the regular city council meeting, starting at 7:00 PM, we will have the 2044 Draft Utilities appendices, and then Embedded Social Worker Program Report from Rachel Adams and Chief Jolly, and future land use map with Kate Turtleow, and then the fireworks report from Liam with Work Hall.
All right.
For the meeting on the 27th, we will have a P3 Committee meeting. We will have under New Business, a Capital Improvement Plan Number Five, Design Update for the Wastewater Treatment Plant Bio Solids Dryer Project with John Landy, and then a Comp Plan Update from, I'm assuming that'll be Kate Turtleow or Lance Bailey. For the regular council business meeting, that is starting at 7:00 PM, we will have a presentation on the State J-Lock Report for Public Records. That's our annual report that's required. We do have under unfinished business, the second reading of the ordinance, or excuse me, the ordinance for downtown commercial amendments. So that'll be coming forward as well. That's what we have in the extended agenda.
Thank you. Any questions on the, any questions on the extended agenda? All right. And we already have noted that you're going to be out on the 27th. Thank you. All right. City Administrator Report?
All right. For the City Administrator Report, I did want to bring to council- I did wanna bring to council's attention, I didn't mention it, and the extended agenda, but the Finance and Human Resources Committee Meeting for August 20th, that start time is going to be 6:00 PM instead of 5:30. Just note that on your calendars. I did also want to just share with council briefly the Association of Washington Cities, AWC Legislative Priorities. I did provide a brief update to the Legislative Committee earlier this evening, but the Association of Washington Cities did adopt their policy statement. That's just the broad statement around the items that cities generally work around. So infrastructure improvements, economic development, environment, policing, public safety, all those items. AWC adopted kind of a broad list of policies that they plan to pursue over the coming years, particularly around legislative priorities. The Policy Committee that's working on the legislative priorities for AWC for 2025, they're currently seeking feedback on legislative priorities, those things that are of particular interest to communities, cities. We, as we talked in the Legislative Committee earlier this evening, we don't have much in the way of changes coming forward, I think, for our legislative priorities for 2025. It is a little bit early for us. Typically, we wait for the Association of Washington Cities to finish its priorities and publish them, and then we reach out to our boards and commissions in the fall, September and October, before bringing something back to the Legislative Committee to take a look at. We did speak this evening with the Legislative Committee about proposed changes to the indigent defense, so public defender standards. And that is something that the Legislative Committee recommended that the city send a letter to the Washington State Supreme Court. The court is currently collecting comments on the proposed changes to the standards. The reason why this is important is, in looking at the new standards, it appears that the city will be, will need to hire additional legal counsel, so additional public defender. So it will have a budget impact to us. So we'll be bringing back a letter for the whole city council to take a look at before we move forward with that. But I did wanna bring that to the council's attention. I don't anticipate that we'll be changing much in the way of our legislative agenda at this point. Those things that we've been focused on over the last couple of years, affordable housing, housing choices, mental and behavioral health and substance abuse disorder issues, public safety, infrastructure improvements, all of those items, I think, will generally remain the same, although there may be, you know, some slight changes kind of around the edges of what's probable and possible in this next upcoming election. But the whole council will be taking a look at that legislative agenda at the end of November and first part of December. So that just gives you, I think, some context for some of the information that's coming out from the Association of Washington Cities. So I'll pause there and ask the mayor, council, if there's any questions.
Yeah, and just as, as part of that, when we're talking about infrastructure, that also includes SR 522 and highway too. So just making certain that we heard transportation and infrastructure is part of that, in case I missed it. Any questions for the, for city administrator? All right, thank you.
Yep, the last item I have is just a kudos from a community member. We received an email from a community member, not a Monroe resident per se, lives on the border between Monroe and Snohomish. And she wrote a very nice email just saying how much she really appreciated the level of effort that the council was taking, particularly about, around revitalizing downtown Monroe. She noted in her email that it was clear that the community has been heard, that the new signage really makes Monroe look more awake. That was her words. And she was particularly appreciative of the landscaping around Monroe, particularly at the roundabouts. She said, everything looks beautiful and well-kept. So I just wanted to share that with council. So often, it feels like we get a lot of criticism for the works that we do, so we're trying to do a much better job at sharing emails and other feedback when it's positive for the work that we've been doing. So thank you to council for continuing to invest in those things that clearly make an impact on community members.
All right. Did you ever mention any questions? All right, just a couple notes from me. One reminder that the county council is holding a public hearing next week, a week from yesterday. This is on, yesterday was the 12th, so the 19th? Okay, at 6:00 PM? Good, all right. And this is on the Comp Plan at the county. So I know that there are at least two councilmembers right now who are attending, Councilmember Walker and Councilmember Fulter. And that I will do my best to attend. I have all day training down somewhere on 167 somewhere that is supposed to go until 4:00, 4:30, so I'm gonna do my best to make it up there through the traffic to Everett to speak also. If there's anybody else that would like to attend to share our position and concerns related to the Comp Plan, feel free to reach out to me. We can certainly provide you with a bulleted list of notes that are consistent with what the council's already approved in the letters, the letters that have been sent forward to the county. The next item is budget. A lot of my time with the city over the last couple weeks, last few weeks, has been spent working on the budget. So just letting you know that I'm really appreciating staff and their work around the budget for the 25 to 26 biennial budget. And look forward to bringing forward to you a recommendation at the end of September, beginning of October, as we normally do. And also, I just wanna express how much I appreciate the work that's occurring on Frylands right now. For those of you that have not seen, Frylands has been ground down in places with new asphalt going in. I know that we did receive a couple questions from residents about Frylands, and I think the staff is doing a, I think the staff is doing a really, really good job out there, working with the contractor to make certain that people are being routed around. So thank you. If you could share my appreciation with the contractor, I'd appreciate it too. And then also, a shout out to the Parks Department. I know that we've heard it tonight, and a couple councilmembers have mentioned it. They were on it with Wakeboard and with the triathlon. And again, shout out back to Public Works again for coordinating with the contractor to make certain that we could get into National Night Out. I was concerned when I saw big machines coming in on Monday morning, knowing that on Tuesday, we were having National Night Out. They did a really good job to make certain that we could still get into National Night Out. Big shout out, and thank you to Rotary for all the work that they did putting together National Night Out and for all the staff that were involved in doing that, and for everybody that participated, including people that came and had booths there. I learned that there were 75 total booths there. I would guess that maybe eight to 10 of them were city-related, most of them PD, but that leaves still a lot of tents, pop-up tents that were there with people from sporting groups to human services to law enforcement and so on and so forth. So a big thank you to the community. I'm gonna guesstimate, and I'm sure we'll hear later, that probably a couple thousand people over the course of three hours were there. And I did meet somebody who had been at two other National Night Outs earlier that evening, and there was absolutely no way to compare the difference between the, across them. We were much larger than any other National Night Out. And in my day job now, I see other National Night Outs. Ours is massive, so. Good, and I'm echoing over here. I think that's all I have to report tonight. Does anybody have any questions for me? All right, thank you very much. With that, it is now 8:08 PM, and we are adjourned unless there's objection. We are adjourned. Have a great evening, everybody, and a great week.